Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, April 26, 2021, 7:00 p.m. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now open forum. Anyone here for open forum? Seeing none, I will close open forum. And we have the distinct pleasure of having Senator Michael Brady with us to discuss some legislation. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen, selectwoman and I'll talk about the home rule petition that I was asked to file and pass in the Senate. And if you've got any questions, let me know. Last year, we were asked to file the legislation on a home rule petition at the town of East Bridgewater, enact or authorize certain investments by the treasurer of the town of East Bridgewater. And it was going through the normal process like every home rule petition does, and we were told back in July, and my chief of staff, Al, was with me as well as I had Jim Burton, we just, I know everybody's schedule is busy, we just came from a Plimpton firefighters awardee, and I got another thing. But basically, it was in the orders of the day, so we figured everything's going fine. And then, I didn't find out, and I'm grateful to selectmen from going for calling my office, because only home rule petitions get passed in informal sessions, it's no big deal. If there's any change that has to be made, we get heard by the leadership and go from there. And I didn't find out that it never got passed, and in the middle of COVID and everything else, there was other things that have come up, we've been dealing with budgets, even last year during the budgets because of COVID, we ended up passing monthly budgets the whole year, and everything was delayed, and a lot of bills didn't get put through. And I'm finding out that some other towns, not from my district, but other home rule petitions did get done either. So basically, when the selectman brought it to my attention, we refiled the bill in January, and it's passed the Senate, but, and I wanted to thank my chief of staff, because everything that passed the Senate, we just found out recently that the wording on one of the things they weren't accepting in the House side. So he had to run around and get some paperwork from the town of East Bridgewater to get that to the House Council, so it gets passed, and we're trying to, we're keeping a very close eye on this, because again, as I mentioned, normally home rule petitions go through right away, and because of all the situations that happened, we're keeping eye on my chief of staff, myself, and working with our House leadership to make sure it gets through as soon as possible there.
Okay, appreciate that. Any idea when the rewording of this has been brought in front of the House yet?
I got the necessary document into House Ways and Means yesterday. Actually, today. He emailed.
It's still Monday.
In East Bridgewater, it's Monday.
I got it through, and they just acknowledged receiving it about five minutes ago. So the House is in session all week, they're working on their budget debate. So I really hate to promise anything at this point, but it should be, it should be taken up.
We'll contact our House representatives directly, see if they can tell us where it is and when they'll respond to it.
And I'm happy to, you know, I'm in constant contact with Alison Sullivan-Kotov, and I haven't talked to her yet today or nothing, but any help, and please, I do ask too, anytime, anything, please keep in contact. I always generally have a good communication line with all my towns I represent, I represent everywhere from northeast of the city of Brockton down over to Hanover down to Plimpton, and anything comes up, don't hesitate to contact me. I know, selectmen from going, we've been playing phone tagging them, I was trying to meet, you know, so we could sit down and have a coffee whenever you're free, and that goes to any board members. I mean, I've known Chairman Sheedy and Selectwoman Julius for quite some time.
Yeah, it seems we're seeing each other every other week.
Yeah, we were just here giving out food to the elderly at the COA the other day.
Right. Okay, any questions? Peter?
No, I think, again, we were trying to get back and forth, I apologize, we missed each other. I think my concern was that this, having worked with Cohasset, who passed this back some time ago, had had some success with it, and I have spoken to Treasure Collector, Melissa, as well about it, we're excited to get going, we know what this potential there for some investments that, you know, if we had done this earlier, maybe five or six years ago, we would have been in a better place. So again, the longer we wait, the opportunities that we could see financially from some investments that the same firms that work with Cohasset, that are willing to speak to us, are looking to jump aboard. So anything you can do to keep the process rolling, you know, that's our job here, is to make sure not only that the citizens' money is protected, but also that if we can generate more of it, that's what we're here to do.
Sure. And we know in these difficult times with COVID how tough it's been for a lot of people out there, you know, we've lost a lot of lives in Commonwealth, even the Student Opportunity Act, which would have brought more money into the cities and towns, got put on hold last year because of COVID. So we're hoping to get more locally aid this year, and as well as the Student Opportunity Act and some other budgetary things, because the funding for these towns are so important. And thank goodness to our county commissioners, I'll tell you, we were concerned when they were getting the federal money in the beginning, we all talked about it, but I think they did a real good job reimbursing towns, and I get invited from Treasurer Tom McBride to all these events, and everyone's happy when they get a check to the town, so.
We've received 11 so far.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've done a tremendous job, and AIPs coming along, and we'll take a look at that when that comes into, and see where we're going to go with that. Anything else you can give us for updates from the state?
That's about it. As my chief of staff mentioned, the House is doing their budget this week, we're going to be taking up next month, and hopefully, we'll get everything moved forward, and we're also waiting to see, I know Congressman Lynch, who represents part of our areas down here, mentioned that the feds are trying to get some more funding coming into the Commonwealth as well, so.
Right. Good, right.
Again, and to any other board members, please don't hesitate to keep in contact with my office, because anything comes up, please let us know.
I do.
I know, we've known each other for a long time, as well as Selectwoman Julius, and again, if whenever you're free, selectman, let me know, we'll sit down, have a coffee.
You're welcome. Do anything.
No, thanks for coming in, thanks for keeping this moving along, and we look forward to getting it passed and signed by the governor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, and I'll let Rebecca know as soon as this is moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully this week.
Look forward to that.
Good night, Ron.
Christopher McGee, the library director, you're up. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give some updates on what's going on over at the library these days. Some of this people know, some of it people don't know, so we did have some long-term staff retirements, so some folks may have seen us hiring a good bit recently, so that's the reason why that is. So if you do come over to the library, you might see some new faces these days, and hopefully, more new faces soon. Some folks have well-deserved their rest at this point after many years of service. We are open to the public, we still get calls about that every day. So we did open last year in May, and we were open for a good bit of last year, we closed again in December when the numbers of cases for COVID went up, but we opened again on March 15th, so we've been open a little over a month now. Our numbers, of course, are not really high, as you can expect, we do have reduced hours right now, in order to allow us to do some extra cleaning than from what we normally do, and also to do some curbside pickup for folks who don't want to come into the building. So usually, we average about 250 to 300 people a day, now it's about 100. But that's still within reasonable limits for the size of the library and the number of hours we're open. So, you know, while the numbers are down, they're still good numbers, and it still makes for safe visiting of the library with the numbers that we have coming in. We have all the normal COVID restrictions and limits in place with, you know, one-way traffic patterns, and have to wear your mask, and all of those things that we're used to from everywhere, from the grocery store to here at Town Hall. We have removed the public seating, so we are discouraging folks from hanging out in the library and reading or studying and that sort of thing, but we are allowing browsing, we don't have any sort of time limits. It really hasn't been an issue, as I say, because we really haven't had too many, like, crowds at the library at any time, so it is, you can come, you can spend as long as you want trying to pick out your next book, as you often do.
What can I say, I'm from the old school.
Well, you know, we're glad to have you. We still have the public computers are still available, we have shortened the time limit on those to 30 minutes, but they are available, so folks are welcome to come in and use that. But we've also extended the Wi-Fi out to the parking lot, so if people don't want to come in, but they do need to be able to use computers, or they don't have, you know, internet access at home, they can use the Wi-Fi from the bench out front when it's nice weather, or from their cars in the parking lot if they need to do that.
Right.
And people do take advantage of that. So if you're working from home, you're tired of being at home, you can come to the library, you can't maybe sit inside, but you can sit outside on a nice day and use the Wi-Fi at the library. And we do still have the children's room closed, and that's our biggest thing that we're trying to work on to get that back open. I know that that's a huge need for the community, so we do have a small browsing collection of children's materials that is up on the first floor, and then the staff at the children, in the children's room are welcome, are willing to bring anything up from the children's room if people need those items. But we do realize that people want to be able to browse and allow their children to browse, and we are working to reconfigure the space, it's just so small and kind of cramped down there, and that's been the concern, but we are looking to open that soon. So be looking out for our social media posts and things to announce that we will be opening that very soon. And then we do have our contactless curbside, and we have certain hours set aside that we'll do contactless curbside pickup, so if people want to call the library or use the library catalog and put things on hold, they can come and come to the parking lot, and we'll bring the materials out for them, they don't have to come in. But even though we do have those hours set aside, we'll do it anytime. If people come, you know, 10:00 in the morning, and they want to, you know, they don't want to come in, but they want to pick up some library materials, we're more than happy to check them out to them and bring them out to the parking lot. And then, as far as program is concerned, we're still not really doing much in-person or any in-person programming, we have virtual programming. So, you know, if you check out our calendar on the website, you'll see the programs we're doing virtually, we had a cooking class this afternoon, that, you know, those are always popular, we have one more in the series that'll be in May, so if you're interested, the recipes are really easy, anybody can do them, even if you're not a cook, and it's a good variety. I think this today, we did shrimp fajitas, and then I think, I think he's doing chocolate chip cookies of some sort, maybe, I think with cheesecake or something, and stuffed in them or something next month. So if you like that, those are in the afternoons.
Chairman, I object, I haven't had my dinner, and I'm listening to this.
Well, I didn't bring you samples, I'm sorry.
Sorry for the interruption.
All right, we'll let you go, you can return that before.
Okay, well, next time, we'll try to, I'll try to make sure I bring some samples.
Can you come back in and make, right after I do the?
After the cookies, yeah, okay. We also are doing, we are planning some in-person programming out on the lawn this summer, mainly for kids, but we'll try to do that as safe as we possibly can, but still get some actual in-person activities. And then we have our Take and Make Kids and Storytime to Go, and so if you're interested in those kinds of things, you can do crafts at home, and those are for all ages, we have crafts for, even for adults. And then the Storytime to Go is basically story time in a bag, it has a little craft and some themed books and things, as if you were doing story time at the library, but you can do it at home, and you can reserve those through our calendar site. So if you go on our website and go on our event calendar, you can make a reservation for those kits and those story time things. So that's pretty much what we have going on at the library, so it's all, it's still busy, even though we're kind of at reduced levels at this point, but we're working to get more open all the time.
When I'm up there, there seems to be a good-sized crowd most of the time.
Yeah, I mean, we're spread out, but there's always, you know, there are always some folks around, so.
Any idea when you'll be open for regular hours again, or is that dictated by the state?
No, we're hoping that very soon, so we're, you know, we're working right, part of the thing is the reduced staffing, and then also the extra cleaning regimes, but the news from the CDC is promising as far as that's concerned, so we're actually hoping very soon we'll be announcing the opening of the children's room and restoration to normal hours.
Great.
We'll still do curbside pickup, even when we're back at regular hours, you know, as I say, if people, anytime they want, we'll still do that if they need.
And you do a great job with that, really do. You know?
No, I think the last time I saw each other was at your, one of your meetings, right before the lockdown, so to speak. I know I brought Dave Cronin with me at the time from the Arts Council, I don't know if you know, Dave has stepped down.
I was aware of that, yes.
And so I'm sure Nicole, who's now taking the position again as the chair, will be in touch, she was there prior, I think you might have done some work with her, Chris, in the past.
Yeah, we've been in touch with Nicole already some, so, and there is some funding coming from the EBR Arts Council that will, you know, fund some programs that we're doing this summer, actually.
That's great, good news. All right, so I want to make you aware of the situation, but it sounds like you're already on top of it. Perfect.
Well, we depend on that, as does everyone in East Bridgewater, so, you know, we stay on top of those items.
Are you still quarantining materials, or what's, how are you guys handling that right now?
Yeah, we've reduced quarantine, so we were doing seven-day quarantine, and that was based on the realm, the OCLC's realm studies that showed that after six days, there was still detectable virus on items that were stacked, which of course, we have to do, because we don't have room to spread things out. So that's why we were doing seven days. However, again, with the new statements that have come out from the CDC about the real low chances of contracting the coronavirus from materials, I think it's one in 100, 10,000 or something like that, I don't remember too.
It's high, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it's really, really difficult to contract it from items, like you get it from breathing people's air, not from stuff. So given that, we have reduced it to just three days, starting, we started this week. So we've been very busy to, you know, discharge all of the backlog of materials for four days' worth to reduce that quarantine from seven days to three days, and we're hoping that we can get materials through quicker and fill those holes, especially those popular, you know, new release items.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you doing?
What are we doing? We just went from three to 24.
Okay.
24 hours, yeah.
Hopefully soon.
The staff is, and we're not charging fines, you didn't charge fines anyways, but we did in Carver, but we're not charging fines, because how can you charge fines? I have no way of tracking whether something came in three days ago or two days ago, and I'm thinking that might be a permanent thing.
Yeah, well, we do, we do actually normally charge fines, but we have not the whole time of the virus, the pandemic, and as long as we're quarantining any length of time, we will not charge any fines. So it's all fine pre-check-in at this point, so if you have things at home.
This is your big chance.
Bring them back in.
Thank you for that, now I'll return all the books I have.
And we do, we are accepting all returns through the book drop, though, so drop them off outside before you come in.
That's what we're doing as well.
Jim?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I put my wisecrack in earlier.
I should have, I don't have a pen to make a note, but I'll have it locked in here next time, bring the cookies.
All right, Chris, thank you very much, keep up the great work.
Thanks for coming in.
Madam Clerk, our action item for this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we vote to dissolve the intermunicipal agreement for IT services between the town of East Bridgewater and town of Hanson, effective June 30, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. This was an agreement that East Bridgewater had with the town of Hanson two years ago?
Four years, no.
Okay.
This is the third year.
And we kept on having to split Ryan down the middle, you know, with Hanson, and we decided we want them all to ourselves, so we have dissolved that, and he will be with us full-time as of July 1, 2021, and we appreciate that. And with discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 12, 2021, 6:30 p.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 21, 2021, 11:00 a.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we vote to reopen the special and annual warrants for the June 14, 2021, special and annual town meeting, with the intent to close on May 3, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. Just one of those is?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the, if I may, there's a, there's been talk about the possibility of two additional articles, I'm not sure which warrant they would go on, well, a contribution to the OPEB trust, so that would be on the annual at-town meeting warrant, if it's affordable to do so at this particular meeting. And there's also the subject of the implementation date of the Personnel Bylaw. Currently, the existing Personnel Bylaw and the Personnel Paradigm, as we now know it, will end on July 1, and more responsibility would be, would be given to the Town Administrator's Office and Selectmen's Offices for the administration of the Personnel Rules and Regulations, as I understand it. So there was some, there was some talk about the transition that our offices are in right now, and whether or not we stick to July 1 or seek a later date.
There's been some?
I'm neutral on the matter, but.
There's been some talk on the board about that, on the Personnel Board, that we don't have a town administrator full-time right now, so we really can't turn it over to that office. So, and again, we'll put that, you know, for next meeting, that, and I think maybe we should change this to May 10, so we can make a, we can go ahead with May, is May 3 okay with you on the OPEB?
Yeah, I don't know if the, I'm in discussions with the, and other communications with the Chair of the Finance Committee, and in a face-to-face meeting that we had last week, she raised that possibility. Rebecca, did you say you, in the latest iteration of the annual town meeting warrant, you added that already?
It'll be, yeah, it'll, yeah, as soon as it's open, yeah, it's added, yeah.
So I think the safest thing to do, Mr. Chairman, would be to add an OPEB article, and if we find that this is not the right time to act on it, we can pass over it at town meeting, but if we have an opportunity, I don't think we want to miss it.
Okay. The timeframe for closing the warrants, is next Monday fine?
If, if you're giving me the nod, giving us the nod on the OPEB article, then that date is fine with me.
Okay, and I think on the article, as far as the discontinuing the Personnel Board and turn that policy over to a combination of the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, I think maybe we should go until January 1, 2022.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
It might give you, Mr. Chairman, I've read the Collins Center report, and they did make some commentary on the, on the content of your new Personnel Bylaw, which goes into effect, and there's a couple of amendments or so, so if you want to take it out to January 1, that'll give you the fall town meeting to make some of those corrections. So that just might work out.
Okay.
Good idea.
I'd likely do that on the special town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Okay. I think you're okay with those?
Yep. So I should consider those marching orders then?
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Want to vote to extend the period until May 3? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I vote, make a motion to approve the following applications for one-day liquor licenses from the Villa at Ritter Country Club for weddings on the following dates, all events shall follow COVID-19 safety standards. Do you need me to read these?
As printed.
As printed, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from the Board of Health to use the outside of Satchem Rock to hold a rabies clinic for dogs and cats on June 21, 2021, from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., rain date to be June 28, 2021, 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Second.
Discussion. I know we've been doing this down there for the last couple of years, and it works out fantastic.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from Jennifer Patretic of Simple Graces LLC for the use of Satchem Rock Farm for weekly parent and child outdoor yoga class. Events will be Wednesdays, May 12, 19, 26, 2021, and Wednesdays, June 2, 9, 16, 23, 2021, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., two hours max, class is approximately one hour, then families can utilize walking trails and picnic tables as they see fit for gathering.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sounds great.
Nope.
Just one thing for this, and this will just be included in the letter, the COA Director is just requesting that anyone attending this class park in the overflow parking lot, which is the gravel lot on the right, when you're pulling in from the streets.
Okay.
The paved parking lot is only for the seniors.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Jason Burrow to the Arts Council, effective April 26, 2021, through June 30, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to thank Jason for hopping on board, and we're right into the numbers on the Arts Council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the transfer of Class 2 license from Southbrook Auto Sales, Inc., 500 Bedford Street, no restrictions, to Southbrook Auto, 500 Bedford Street, no restrictions, I guess the hours changed, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., change that to Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that is it for action items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Mr. Purcell.
Mr. Chairman, the town administrator report, and in the upcoming meeting, a portion of the agenda seemed to be morphing here with the items that I have to report, but I will say first, with respect to our planning for the annual town meeting, we continue to lock down certain of our revenue figures, and just today, the, a new version of our local aid numbers came in, and predictably, the shift is not exactly seismic. You know, it's just a few thousand dollars in net income, we had some additional charges, a little more revenue, but less than the net of the charges. So our planning thus far has been, you know, the tolerance has been less than $10,000 overall from January, when things were first published. Significantly, prior to this week's debate on the, on the budget in the, in the House, specifically the House Ways and Means Report, the chairs of both the Senate and the House Ways and Means Committees agreed about 10 days or so ago that, you know, they would roll out identical numbers. So this long tracking period has been truncated, thankfully, so that the numbers that we have today, you can, you can count on using through town meeting.
Fantastic.
There would, there might be some adjustments in the fall, specifically with a school choice and charter school things, enrollments become more clear in the summertime, what actual enrollments will be, so you can reconcile minor differences in a local aid at your fall town meeting, that's really the purpose of the fall town meeting anyway, in preparation for setting your tax rate. So, so that component of the revenues remains stable and pretty much fixed through, through town meeting.
Good.
We have been through, and I have two of my valued finance team members back today, and I can't wait to talk to them about our estimates of local receipts, we're downgrading one category to a, not a, to a fairly significant degree, you know, specifically motor vehicle excise tax collections, which I'll be, I'm anxious to. which I'll be, I'm anxious to, uh, to talk to these two, and didn't dare bother them on their first day back from being away, uh, today. I, I know Melissa was, uh, was busy with the FinCom Chair on, uh, on some matters, in addition to her regular duties as well today, so. But, uh, planning for town meeting, uh, on the financial end, you know, the revenue side, we're, we've pretty much locked that up. I'll be getting into the expenditure side, just to be sure that, um, while we have sufficient revenues right now to meet all the asks that we have on the expenditure side, now taking a measure of what's sustainable year of, over year, over year, uh, on the expenditure side, to make sure that there's not just a, you know, a balance on paper, but, you know, we're, we'll be able to sustain operations without, uh, uh, without a blip. It's just my third week, I, you know, we're, you know, we're getting there, and thank you for the breathing room that you, uh, that you gave to us. Uh, I met with the building inspector today about the, um, as he is by law, the, um, enforcing, uh, uh, officer of the zoning bylaw, uh, to talk about the three zoning articles, and in his case, more particularly the first two. I just want a chorus of "we," I want a consensus on these things, that what we're going to hand to the, uh, to the enforcement officer is something that's, um, that's enforceable, uh, uh, and reasonable. He has a strong customer service bent, too, it seems, uh, I've had two long conversations with him, so I'm, uh, I'm pleased, uh, I'm pleased with that. But also on, uh, on the zoning articles and the town bylaw change, the significant ones are the twin, um, uh, marijuana cultivation articles. I have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday morning with Roy Gardner, the Planning Board Chair, uh, to go over, you know, the genesis of these, uh, of these things, and, um, uh, the marijuana cultivation thing strikes me as really being a political value judgment for you all to make, and the only thing that I'm going to be doing in terms of examinations on those things is, um, uh, are on process and procedure. Uh, I know the planners are very much aware that zoning bylaw changes have to, um, uh, have to go to the Attorney General's Office after town meeting, and they're all about process, 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 process. You know, the composition of, uh, uh, of your ads, the dates of your public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. And they'll give you the boot on a perfectly good bylaw, uh, uh, enactment, and, you know, they'll kick them back if you didn't follow, uh, all the timelines and, uh, and things. I have no doubt that you have, okay, but, you know, that's me, I, you know, I just want to be sure that we're, um, as I told you the other day, Mr. Chairman, we, you know, we want to be perfect for, you know, for town meetings, so, uh, I'll be meeting with the Chairman of the Planning Board, uh, on that. As to, um, uh, and while Phyllis, uh, in particular is, uh, is here, May first is coming up, so, uh, line item transfers, uh, under Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-three B, I know you, uh, you vote them once or twice, I don't know how often you do, and, uh, in May and June, I know Phyllis has a good handle on, on the big stuff, on that, and other things will, uh, other things will trickle in, but, you know, we've got batch files, uh, already set up on that. And part of that was a town meeting exercise as well, do any of these transfers rise to the level that maybe we can't do it within the operating budget and have to have a special town meeting, uh, warrant article? That isn't the, uh, you know, that isn't the case, and, you know, I'm not surprised here, you know, on that. Uh, at future meetings, Mr. Chairman, there's some things, uh, to talk about, um, and I did discuss this with, um, with the police chief just before meeting time, I recall the discussions about the K-9 and, uh, and other incoming contributions. I've got the, uh, I've got the gift account, uh, citations that I, I told him about, and told him that, um, I need to, uh, talk to Phyllis about her way of, her, you know, her preferred way of establishing those accounts. Uh, in organization, Phyllis is going to, uh, is going to donate a K-9 to the, uh, to the Police Department. The Selectmen will have to vote to accept that, and, uh, there is the promise, apparently, of a stream of, uh, of gifts, contributions, uh, to the town, uh, to sustain, uh, that operation for a while, or at least offset costs, so a gift account, you know, statutory gift account will have to set up, and naturally, I need to talk to you about the details before it becomes an action item here at the, uh, here at the table. And, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, I got notice from, uh, the DPW today about, um, uh, their desire to join the so-called South Shore Recycling Cooperative. We'll send materials out to you in advance of your, uh, in advance of your next meeting on that. It is a large, uh, intermunicipal agreement initially established in nineteen ninety-eight, and in those days, intermunicipal agreements were subject to town meeting vote. So, the, uh, the enabling legislation for that organization from nineteen ninety-eight says to join, you have to go, uh, you have to go to a town meeting, but the statutes have been liberalized significantly since nineteen ninety-eight, and my reading of it, as a jailhouse lawyer, I guess you can say, um, is that it's a Selectmen's, uh, it's a Selectmen's call.
Okay.
And, uh, I'll double-check with Counsel, of course, before I put it on the table as a, uh, as an action item for you, and we might pair that up, um, I may have said this at a prior meeting, uh, the waste remove, uh, waste removal contract, uh, is up on June thirtieth, um, uh, of this year, but it's structured in a way, I understand, according to the DPW Director. You, uh, when you put it out to bid, uh, you put it out for five years, base bid, three years, and it's that three-year timeline that comes up this June thirtieth. You have options, I don't, I, I suspect they're mutual options, uh, to go a fourth and a fifth year, either together or, uh, or, uh, or one at a time, uh, so maybe we can pair those two issues up with the DPW Director,
Definitely.
To talk about those two things, maybe at your next, uh, maybe at your next meeting. And, um, uh, also at future meetings, Mr. Chairman, we have three department head contracts, um, that are up for renewal, in, um, uh, in inspection services, in an IT, which we passed over tonight, um, and, uh, and in the assessing, uh, offices. Significant work has been done on those contract renewals, but, um, until recently, we didn't know that they hadn't been vetted, uh, by Counsel, and, uh, we certainly want to do that and put it up here, uh, the right way. Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, we could do, um, IT and, uh, and inspection services at the next meeting, if you're, uh, if you're comfortable with, uh, with that.
We, we may have to take a look at that inspection.
Oh, by all means, oh, yeah.
In an executive fashion.
Oh, uh, uh, thank you for saying that, uh, in an exec, positively, which I understand is your custom.
Yes.
Rebecca told me that that's the, that's the way it goes, Jim, you know? She didn't say Jim, but I kind of got the look, you know?
Some of them we don't have to, some of them are.
Yeah, and Paula, uh, uh, returns, uh, will be back on the seventeenth of May, so, um, your next meeting is May tenth. In an ideal world, Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could, uh, we could do two on the tenth and one at the, uh, at the following meeting.
That's what we'll shoot for.
Okay, and, uh, and finally, um, I've been in communications, uh, with two, uh, unions, uh, one directly, uh, today, fire department whose contract expires on the thirtieth, and, uh, through Counsel, uh, the, um, uh, the clerical contract, which also expires on the, uh, on the thirtieth. I don't know what to tell you right now, but all those things are on the radar screen and, uh, for, uh, for upcoming meetings. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we'll have to look at those two, um, union contracts very soon.
Oh, sure.
And, uh, we'll have to get the town council.
Yep.
Get here right away, and then try and get them in before town meeting.
Yep. I know when I've had occasion to, uh, to talk, uh, to you, I've spoken to you about one, uh, about one of those two, uh, the clerical and the fire department, um, a union representative, uh, I came in today and, uh, handed me the letter, you know, the required letter to, uh, commence negotiations on a successor contract. And then he had to run out to a call, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jim. Rebecca?
I don't have any updates, I, I don't want to be repetitive, I have a feeling you're going to be mentioning the COA Hazard Waste Day and things like that.
I, the hazardous waste, I'm not too sure, um.
Oh, the drug, what was last weekend?
But they did have a shredding and.
Yeah, the shredding and drug.
Needle reper, return on Saturday, it was beautiful weather, um, it went very, very smooth, it was just a steady, um, crowd going through. Last couple of years, we've hadn't really backed up, but this time, since we were delayed last year, we didn't do the last one until last October, well, this was a short period of time, but there was, I can assure you, there was plenty of stuff out there to do, and it was, again, all sponsored by EB Hope, and, uh, hopefully, we'll be in a position to sponsor it again next year.
We just have the upcoming meetings, May tenth, May twenty-fourth, and the special and annual town meeting, June fourteenth. Now, closing the warrant on the third, that could be, we could do that, a goatee meeting, or, just so we don't have to.
Okay.
Have a big meeting, but it's up to you guys what you want to do.
Yeah.
We can talk about it.
Right.
That is it.
Thank you. More discussions? Carol?
I don't have anything. Nothing to discuss. I yield my time to the Vice Chairman.
Don't do that.
I only have a couple of things, uh, one, it would be tomorrow, the, um, committee that's looking at the engineering firm meets with the two applicants, we did have three applicants, one pulled out last week, they've got some considerable work they're doing in East Bridgewater, so they decided that was more fitting to them than to potentially work for East Bridgewater, which was, um, was upsetting, I guess, to some degree, at least to my, uh, to me personally, but, uh, the two firms that we are, uh, meeting with, the groups meeting with tomorrow, will, I think, both have, um, will both have a good, uh, a good outcome and, and give information that, uh, this, this committee can kind of push forward to us, so. And then, finally, after weeks of trying, we have got a date of May fifth to meet with the City of Brock.
Yay!
I've only been working on this for, I don't know, six months, but, so myself.
Let's ask for government.
But, uh, yeah, we're looking forward to. Yeah, uh, the Chief of Staff at, uh, the Mayor's Office was very helpful, Kerry Reynolds, uh, pushed the meeting forward, so on May fifth, myself, John Haynes, and John Clifford will sit with Mayor Sullivan and his staff to talk about, uh, the potential for this municipal agreement between Brockley and East Bridgewater, and our SOAR project hopefully getting pushed forward, so I'll keep you all updated on it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will, uh, accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a great week, folks.
Aight, everybody.